All right, everybody, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Emily, are we recording now? All right. It is now six thirty-three, and I'd like to call the city council work session to order. While this meeting is being held in person in consideration of the ongoing COVID-19 health concerns, we are offering the option for the public to participate through Zoom if preferred. Instructions on how to attend virtually are included in the city council calendar item listed on the front page of missionks.org. The public is also invited to participate in tonight's work session meeting. If you're part of our in-person group tonight and would like to make a comment this evening, please complete the sign up sheet that is available at the podium. Or if you are participating via Zoom, please note your desire to speak in the chat feature. We will take in-person speakers in the order in which they appear on the sign up sheet. For Zoom speakers, you will make your comments through Zoom in the order we receive requests to speak in the chat, following any comments from tonight's in-person attendees. Please note that we will be limiting public comment to three minutes per person. When you make your comment live or on Zoom, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. Our public comment period will follow the conclusion of our presentations this evening by city staff, city consultants, and the developer team with respect to the Mission Gateway Project. Note for the governing body, tonight, we're going to hold comments and questions from members of the governing body until all of the presentations are complete and until public comment has concluded. Thank you, and we will now proceed on with our agenda. Our agenda this evening is a discussion of the Mission Gateway Project. Ms. Smith, will you please outline the order of our presentations this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So first, we'll ask the developer to come up and just kind of recap the presentation. You haven't sort of seen that formal presentation since February, and there have been some changes as you're aware. And then we do have all the members of the city's consulting team here. So Kevin Wimpy with Gilmore and Bell will touch briefly on the ordinances that will be included on your September twenty-eighth agenda. Pete Heaven, city's land use attorney, will talk about the resolution and the development agreement. And then Mr. Kimmel, Bruce Kimmel with Ellers, will, our city's financial advisor, will share some additional information and kind of walk through the report, his report that was included in your packet. And then I'll kind of wrap up and let's have the opportunity to open the floor up for questions and public comment.
Great, thank you, Laura. So our first presenter want to come up, I think Matt?
Good evening, Council. Matt Valenti, the camera group. Thanks for having me. Yeah, the site plan, yeah. Keep going down. There you go. That's good. Sure. Okay, I just want to start out by kind of going through the the plan, the site plan, and explaining to you the differences between what we had from an approved plan previously and what's changed in the in the new FDP, PDP, FDP that we're presenting to the city. The the components that stay the same are the hotel, the office, the parking deck synergy. More or less, the building, the residential small shop buildings along Roland and Johnson are the same. There's some minor tweaks to the interior of that, which I'll explain in a minute. And then really, the the biggest change in the site is the addition of residential units above a smaller food hall. Let me explain first why we made the change. When we came out of the pandemic and got to the point where DA Davidson said, hey, we're seeing projects like yours able to gain some traction in the bond market. We, you know, went to Banco ZK, who's the senior lender still with us on the project. And to de-risk it coming out of the pandemic, they said, we'd really like to see less retail and a much smaller or no food hall and more residential units. And the multifamily residential units being a very stable asset for the project. So that's really the why behind why we had to really take away from the size of the food hall and add the the multifamily to the project, really to de-risk it for for the lenders. We were also able to add some residential units over here where there was, sorry, I'm shaking, where the so far away. Where the residential units were up there and along Johnson, there were some small shop here retail that we were able to turn into amenity space. So the amenity space that was up there within the building along Roland is now going to be actually along Johnson. And on either side of that amenity space, you'll have a small retail space here and here. Each of those will kind of bookend the amenity space. It'll have a leasing office, kind of like your work. You know, work entertainment area for for the residents, a little kitchen area for the residents. You know, fitness center, that sort of stuff would be down there in that amenity area. And that actually opens up back to the pool areas back here, you know, in a little pocket behind the building and and the parking deck in a closed off area. So those are really the the biggest differences. The the, within the residential area here, you've got five stories sitting on top of a smaller food hall, call it ten to fifteen thousand square feet. And then, you know, five stories above that. And then you you will have, you want to flip to the next. Go one more. Okay, so this kind of, this orange piece is the food hall area. And then you've got all the residential here. So along Johnson, at at street level, you will have a bunch of residential units as well. And then this is the amenity space in between the two orange, two orange on caps, which are retail. And then you'll still have all of the restaurant and small shop retail along Roland. As I said, the hotel is the same, the office is the same, and synergy is the same. We can go back to the the last one there. Yeah, this is, no. That one right there. Thanks. So you can see all the entry points are still the same. We've got an entry point off of Johnson, two off of Roland, and two off of Row. So there's a lot of access onto the site. You've got, you've still got a large parking deck in the middle of the project, serving the entire project. You've got pedestrian walkways from the parking deck directly into the residential buildings here, here, and here. You've got, you know, a lot of walkability, the the whole pocket park is still intact. The the new residential areas actually have some private green space for those residents. So that's, that's kind of the project in a nutshell, and not a lot has changed other than this building three, really. Or eight point one, I think we're calling it now. You can go down another one. Yep. Okay, so this is the new new residential building. So, oh, sorry. The new residential building, this is the food hall area here, and then you'd have residential going along Johnson. So this is at the corner of Johnson and Row here. This again would all be residential till about here, and you'd have the food hall there. And again, you've got five stories over a podium of of first level. You can go down. Just another elevation of it. It's kind of keeping in theme with the architecture of the existing residential buildings. This one is actually designed by NSPJ. And the the other ones are still El Dorado. But they're using a lot of the same design elements to kind of marry them up. They're not going to be identical, but they will work well together. Just, this really just shows the, you know, kind of a landscaping plan, but shows the addition of the green spaces here that we didn't have before the. I can imagine this is one of my. Shows the addition of the green space here for the the new building, the new residential building. I think that's it. I don't think there's another one. Is there? Okay, I'll, let me just go back quickly and talk about some of the things that the city council asked for and touch on those. You know, the city council asked that we work in some affordability into the residential. And we're able to get ten percent of the residential units at sixty percent AMI. So we feel like that's a really good step in that direction of getting some affordability built into the project. And then on sustainability, the city asked us to take a look at looking at the project as a whole. What can we do more to have a sustainable project? We actually had in the prior development agreement a clause in there where we were actually developed or designing to some lead standards, but we were never getting necessarily a certification. And what we've done now, moving forward, is we're going to do two certifications. We're going to do a Green Globe certification for the hotel. And for the for synergy, I'm sorry, for the office, for the hotel and the office. And then we're going to do NGBS, which is National Green Build Building Society. And they, they are really kind of focused on residential. So all the residential will be NGBS. And some people know the lead name better, but both of those programs are actually better in the fact that they, after you design, they come on and inspect, make sure that you've actually designed, you've you've built what you've been designed for. And then they come back and certify that that's there. Lead doesn't actually do that. You actually pay them, they stamp your drawing, and you go on your way. So we feel like that's a, you know, a better solution for for the city in terms of of sustainability. I think that's it. Sure, sure. Basically, the 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 overall, the the project is actually more expensive, as you can imagine, than previous. So the capital stack really. We're going to have to put in more equity to and keep the the bond amount really, even though we're resetting the clock and adding a percent in CID. The bond amount is going to be about the same. So even though we have a more expensive project, we'll have to put in more equity to to make up that gap. So, you know, without resetting the clock and without adding the extra percent in the CID, we'd fall, as Bruce can probably attest, he will fall really short in the capital stack with the bond, with the bond proceeds. So that's really why. And and when you, you know, when you get rid of, or when you have to take that large food hall that we were going to do pre-pandemic and shrink it down to fifteen thousand square feet, you're not going to generate quite as much sales tax. So that was part of why the CID had to be doubled. Do you have anything else, Laura? Okay.
All right. Thank you, Kevin.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members, Kevin Wimpy with Gilmore and Bell. Nice to see you all again. Take a quick detour from substance to procedure and and talk real quickly about the items you'll be asked to consider next two weeks from now. And there will be three items pertaining to TIF, CID, and then the development agreement. The first two items will be preceded by the public hearing that's required by statute, one for TIF, one for CID. So first on the TIF ordinance, it'll accomplish two things. First is termination of the existing TIF plan. So if you recall, at the beginning of this year, the development agreement with the developer lapsed and was terminated. However, the incentive districts still remain out there, both the TIF plan and the community improvement district. So it'll first terminate the existing TIF plan. And second, it will adopt simultaneously the new TIF plan. As we've talked about before, the effect of that is that it allows you to spend the TIF money and has a maximum term of up to twenty years. And when we refer to spending the TIF money, that does include issuance of TIF bonds, should we come to terms on on those items. The TIF ordinance does require a majority, two-thirds vote to pass, which would be different from the other items. Again, second is the CID ordinance. So similar to the TIF ordinance, this will first terminate the existing CID that still exists on the property. And then second, create the new community improvement district. CID is a little bit longer than TIF and has a twenty-two-year term. And as just discussed, it raised the community improvement district sales tax from one percent to two percent for that term. That ordinance is just a majority vote. Before getting to the third item, I pause and anyone has any questions on the two ordinances?
We're actually going to hold questions for the end. And then, yeah, for anyone who has questions, public or on council, we'll be able to bring everybody back up. We may have questions.
Thanks, Mayor, for the reminder. Yeah, so third item is the resolution on the development agreement. And for that, I'll bring up Mr. Pete Heaven to to discuss that.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Pete Heaven, your land use attorney. And I'm the guy who's going to have to put all of this into a development agreement. As most of you know, the development agreement is a very lengthy document, and it's designed to last for at least twenty-two years. So we're tasked with not only capturing the present, but also predicting the future. I will say this, we are very close to having a final product. I hope to get it out to you next week, so you'll have plenty of time to review it before the twenty-eighth. But we make great strides on sustainability, affordability, the conditions to the issuance of bonds. And one thing you'll notice in this agreement is we are not going to deal with phase two of this project. Only phase one at this time. The agreement's going to provide that when the developer is ready and has the financing for phase two, it will come to us again for incentives and for a potential bond issue. So that's something you'll see a little different than previous iterations of the development agreement. But we're confident we'll have something that you can all review. We are just the scriveners of your wishes. So what I prepare for you is, comes without any pride in authorship, tear it to pieces, tell me I'm an idiot, and I'll rewrite it for you, because it's got to be your document and not ours. So anyway, that's it. We should have something to you next week.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have Bruce.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Bruce Kimmel with Ellers. And I've got to ask you, when was the last time you saw four people come up in suits and sport coats? It's like, it's like we're almost, the almost pandemic never happened. Emily, could you pull up the my memo? I just wanted to hit some of the points from that. You've already seen a lot of that in in Laura's memo to you as well, and and some of the points that Kevin and Pete just covered. But I did want to just sort of go over a few of the building blocks again and then add a few points. You know, it's right after Laura's memo. Big packet. Look at you, look at you, Rain Man. Yep. All right. And if you could blow that up a little bit, great. Okay. So I'm just want to start, yeah, one more page up. Great. As you saw in the memo, I went through and and summarized the different elements of the proposed financial package, the TIF, the CID, the transient guest tax. And I hope that was helpful that I went back to the context of two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, because, you know, this got presented again sort of as a baseline, a sort of a, well, this is of course where we're starting from. But for those of you who are around for that negotiation and conversation, it really was a pretty significant pivot. And I felt that the terms that were agreed to back then were really significantly better than in previous gateway agreements and really took into more at more precise account the city's interests in having ongoing revenues. Not, you know, just at the end of the tip for whenever the bonds were paid off, but throughout, so that you had money to pay for operating expenses, capital expenses, and so on. And we all certainly know that you have a long list of CIP projects. And it's only right that you have some ongoing benefit from the this project, you know, while it's going for the first fifteen, twenty years as well as after. So hopefully that was helpful to give a little context on that. If we can go to the next page. Yeah, looking at the chart of revenues, I I promised an update and and I will have an update very soon. You know, this is kind of like you peel back the onion and you say, oh, I need to update this. And I need to ask Matt Valenti about one other thing and and ask GFI about another thing. But by and large, I feel very confident that these numbers are indicative of what kind of revenues the city should expect to receive during the twenty slash twenty-two years of the TIF and the CID. First, if both phases one and two are completed, and then, as you saw, if just phase one is completed. So here, you can see the the city special sales taxes projected as well as the city's portion of the one percent general sales tax, that forty-five percent. And then also the transient guest tax and the base property taxes in that green highlighted column. A huge element, of course, is the stormwater assessments. And I I think we feel on the on the city and advisory team that you stand a much better chance of continuing to collect that six hundred thousand dollars a year in the assessment as well as the actual stormwater utility fees if this project phase one goes forward. But as you can see, if you go through all the way to the bottom, it's about twenty-six million dollars of total revenues on a future value basis. And obviously, a little bit less than that if you try to present value that back to today's dollars. If you go to the second slide, Emily, or the next page, and just look at phase one, I took another look at this and and realized that I was maybe a little too too generous to phase one in the numbers that I presented to you last week. So I feel more comfortable estimating the phase one only revenues at almost exactly twenty million dollars. I will note, however, that I went back and compared these projections to what was estimated for similar components back in the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen deal. And these numbers are definitely more conservative, both on a square footage basis as well as on an inflation rate, which I think is appropriate. You know, this is what the developer is showing to their bankers as to the underpinnings of what they think the the TIF and CID bonds can generate. And it's also what has been shared with the underwriting firm, DA Davidson, that's been running these numbers as to what, you know, could be generated through the SO bonds, the special obligation bonds. So if anything, I think if the project happens as projected and, you know, with some timing adjustments to be finessed and refined, I think, you know, this is a is a pretty conservative estimate overall with a two percent inflation rate and starting with more conservative estimated sales as well for the elements of the project. Well, also, in the next iteration of this report, which will be coming with with the draft development agreement, I will, as we have in past presentations, also give you a sense of what are those revenue streams? The the course, the reciprocal revenue streams that are going to the project per se? And they'll go to repaying the bonds, you know, it's it's, I want to be clear that these revenues do not pass go, you know, when the city collects these sales tax increment dollars and in property tax increment dollars, they'll go straight to the bond trustee. Okay, so it's not like it goes to the developer and then the developer sends it to the trustee. It goes right to that trustee whose charge it is is to make those payments of principal and interest to the bondholders. And only after those bonds are completely paid off would there be any possibility of revenues to go to the developer on a pay-as-you-go basis to reimburse for other eligible expenses. So I I don't think we've touched on that at least not in a while as to how those revenues would go on the project side. And I wanted to just clarify that, that it'll be a very strict protocol for how those monies are allocated and spent going forward. A few other things I just wanted to note and would be happy to answer any and all questions. So I talked about the sales tax estimates. We'll be doing some additional refinements to those projections. The other thing I just wanted to note is, you know, these numbers end at twenty and twenty-two years because that's the proposed timeline for the TIF and the CID. But it's also worth looking at over the horizon now. It's impossible to know if these numbers will be accurate. Hopefully, they'll be low in comparison to what you're you're actually collecting. But recall, and and I think sometimes it's easy to lose sight of the fact that once those bonds and pay-go terms are done, you get the full taxes, right? You get the full property taxes, the full sales taxes on general and special rates, as well as, of course, all transient guest taxes. And that's a really big number, especially on the transient guest taxes. I will not especially on, but that's a piece that gets captured by the the TIF. And then all of a sudden, all nine percent is going to the city. So if, of course, if the hotel happens as proposed, and we all hope it does. Few other things. I think I've covered, hopefully to your satisfaction, the fact that this project does need TIF and CID assistance. There are a lot of costs that are not being financed, that are essentially sunk costs and that the developer has paid for. And their their only hope of being repaid by that, repaid for those costs are to have phase one go, have phase two go, and then actually be able to pay themselves back from future project cash flows as well as perhaps from some of that pay-as-you-go TIF and CID at the very end of the timeline. I would note that I've had some discussions with the development team about their construction budget. They have worked in some contingency into that budget already. I think they would say they feel pretty good about that, given the current construction cost market. But there's always the chance that rates will go higher or costs will go higher, and then interest rates will go higher on their lending as well. I think it's worth noting that loan rates don't always correspond to what you see in the news about federal funds rates. So it's not like, you know, when the Fed raises the rate again next week, it's not like their loan rate will necessarily go up by the the same amount. But there is upward pressure there, right? And so I think that just speaks also to the but for nature of this, that if you see fit to support this project, I want to convey to you that really, you know, they're not going to be making windfall profits. Really, they're looking, they're looking to make a marginal rate of return and get this project done and up and running so that they can start over time recouping some of their past investments. And then finally, Pete mentioned this in his comments, but it'll be really key, and I'll be paying close attention to this. The the issuance of the SO bonds, right? So just like we are your financial advisor on geo bond issues for the city's own purposes, we will also be very actively involved in the issuance, if you decide to move forward, of any special obligation bond. So we'll be negotiating on the city's behalf as to the underwriting of those bonds, because the better underwriting terms there are on those bonds, the faster they can be paid off. And the more chance the development has of of having a, you know, being financially successful. So it's in everyone's interests, both the developers and the cities, to make sure that those bonds are underwritten as efficiently as possible. And and we look forward to being part of that conversation. And I think I'll leave it there. And and we cannot certainly talk about phase two and whether and how we should think about that as part of the Q and A. But I really wanted to focus on phase one and what we knew at this point and what we're projecting. So thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Laura, you want to pull it all together?
The big, and I did want to elaborate. I've had some questions about some of the numbers included in the phase one revenues that would be available. And and I've had several requests to kind of look at that in a variety of different ways, taking out some of those revenue streams. As you probably saw in Bruce's chart, there were some assumptions made, particularly with respect to the special dedicated sales taxes that we have. So when we talked about that in a previous, I think, work session or or setting, he's assumed that both the the dedicated street sales tax and the Parks and Recreation sales tax would be renewed at their tenure, their next tenure horizon date. I've backed those numbers out. So the most conservative, if we aren't successful next week in renewing the Parks and Recreation sales tax, we know we have one more year of that dedicated revenue stream, plus we know we have through two thousand thirty-two and the street sales tax. So that twenty million number that was included in his chart goes to sixteen, basically sixteen point three million. If we are successful in renewal of the Parks and Recreation sales tax over its life, then we would be looking at seventeen point three million, which is, we've talked about, that generates about a million a year. So that's the ten million dollars. If we take it a step further and say, if you want to back out the special assessment, that's something that is due and payable to the city. And I think, as Mr. Kimmel mentioned. That's something that is due and payable to the city, and I think as Mr. Kimmel mentioned. You know. Having a project that's completed and generating revenue is probably our best um. Hope in in collecting that six hundred thousand dollars a year, but under the. Worst case scenario, which is not renewal of the parks and recreation sales tax, that's seven, when we back out. The special assessments, that's seven point nine million and then eight point nine million. If we are to renew the parks and recreation sales tax. So we'll add those, we'll kind of provide that context in the next iteration of of memos that that come out for you. I think everybody's covered most of the um. Things that were included in the memo, one of the things that we didn't touch on was the preliminary development plan. That is, uh I think Matt referenced that that has been submitted, it's under review by our community development staff. And is currently scheduled to be heard by the planning commission at their September twenty sixth meeting, so you will have. A recommendation from the planning commission on the twenty eighth. And then to potentially consider along with these other things. Think everyone's familiar with, you know, we passed the resolutions in August, setting the public hearings on the TIF and CID that were required by statute. And so we will, on the twenty eighth, open, conduct those public hearings. Uh and I, as others have referenced, then you will have a series of other items uh for consideration for action. If there's additional information that you need or require. You you would have the option to table that to a future meeting date for additional consideration. Uh so I just want, you know, our goal is to get you this complete package next week, so you have that opportunity to review that. And, you know, I think the the goal is. You know, for you all to be as comfortable uh with all the information you need in your decision making process. Balancing that with the developer's desire to get restarted and get potentially into the bond market. I think that's the one thing, Matt, I forgot to have you touch on was just timing development schedule of the project. But if the council would see fit to. Approve a new TIF project plan, Community Improvement District and the Development Agreement. The next step in this process, I think everybody is familiar with, is that we would then move into. Um all of the steps and the work that it takes to get into the bond market and issue the special obligation bonds, and so that includes a feasibility study. That includes preliminary offering letters and a whole variety of things, so we are, it is not an immediate um. Process by any stretch of the imagination. Um and again, I will, we're all here, able to stand ready for questions. I think that's what. I was asked to.
Our cover. Yeah, thank you, Laura, so we will first go to public comment, again, if you are in person, please, if you have not done so, sign up on our signup sheet. I don't know, Laura, if you want to tell us who's up first on our in-person signup sheet. All right. Great, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council members. I know a lot of you, some of you I don't, uh my name is Casey Cassius, I am a Mission resident. Prior to being a Mission resident, I was a countryside resident, and I happened to be president of the Countryside Council at the time of the merger. So I'm a twenty seven year resident, more or less of Mission. Another uh. Interesting aspect is my grandfather, J C Harmon, was the very first. Executive Director of the Mission Chamber of Commerce, so my ties to Mission go back a very, very long time, back to the fifties. Before most of you were born, as I look out that way. I truly want the East Gateway Project to be successful, as I'm sure each of you do. What you also may not know was I was actually the architect for the master plan that created the East Gateway Project seventeen years ago, actually, in twenty. Oh, five, oh, six, I guess, Matt. But my reason to come before you today really isn't so much to do about the Gateway Project as it is about TIF. You're making a twenty year commitment, and I doubt any of you, but I can't say that because Debbie's sitting out there, will be here in twenty years. So think about that as you make this commitment, that you're really. Putting this city in a position that's going to take twenty years to see if it comes off to fruition. It's concerning. The new design pros uh proposes three hundred and seventy three apartments, that's double the number in twenty seventeen. If you look citywide, Mission has proposed adding. One thousand and seventy units on their website. A thousand and seventy units, many of which, most of which are seeking TIF financing. So that's money you're taking out of the revenue stream, but increasing the services that are required for the city. I think that's really concerning, you're increasing density, you're adding more residents. You're needing to provide more services, yet you're reducing the potential tax rule for twenty years. That's not insignificant. These developments are putting increased loads on the infrastructure. Aging and aging infrastructure, I might add. To our streets, our utilities, our parks. On public safety, police and fire, if you look and see where the problems that occur in the city. Largely, they're in the apartment complexes, simple fact, I'm not trying to be negative about it. Yet you're abating or reducing those taxes for twenty years. Based on your public statistics that I got off the website, eighty percent of Mission's residents now are. Single family resident owners and twenty percent are rental, of that twenty percent, fifty percent are in single family residences. But if you add more than a thousand new units, you're going to change that demographic dramatically. I don't know whether it's good or bad, I truly don't. You need to be sure that these developments are providing the needed amenities and the infrastructure within the confines of their units. You saw the diagram that was put up earlier of the site plan. I would dare to say that the amount of green space on there is barely bigger than my yard. And I'm sorry, they need to do better, they need to provide more amenities within the site and not dump it all back on the city. It's not the city's responsibility to provide for those three hundred and seventy three residents, new units. It's the developer, and it's not just the East Gateway Project. It puts an increased burden back again on all of us who are taxpayers, each of you and me, and we shouldn't have to just bear that burden. I heard the the Bond fellow say earlier that he couldn't guarantee the numbers, he couldn't. Who would have seen the recession in two thousand and eight? Who would have seen the recession in twenty thirteen? Who would have seen COVID? Who would have seen the change in the retail housing market? They don't know, they're not soothsayers, they're not clairvoyant. So it puts a lot of. Burden on you guys to make a good decision. Be cautious, numbers can be deceiving, I hope they're right, truly I do, because I want the project to succeed, I want it to be great. But over the course of my architecture career in forty years, I saw a lot of projects that went belly up, but looked great on paper. So don't just assume because you have a tax consultant or an advisor come in and tell you it's all going to work, that it is, because sometimes it doesn't. As you weigh your incentives, be sure to look at both sides of the equation, the good and the bad economic times. What happens in case of default? How is the city covered? The LLC won't do you a damn bit of good, I promise you that. Don't be overly optimistic, be realistic. Twenty years is a really long time. Work together with the developer, create a win-win-win situation where the city wins, we win as residents, and the developer wins. Thank you all very much, I'm glad I'm over here and not sitting over there.
Thank you, Laura, do we have any other in-person signups tonight? Okay, or anyone else? I don't see any hands out there. So Emily, anyone online to make public comment? No? We will turn to uh members of the council and let's try to have everyone ask a question and I'll try to go around and. You know, we can come back to folks, but let's let everyone have a chance to ask questions and we can bring up any of our distinguished guests, if you have questions for particular speakers, yeah, Ken, then Trent. Then Hillary.
I have a question for the developer in terms of the GAT chart that was presented. It looks like uh phase one and two are concurrent. The timeline indicates that this is, this project is going to be completed in twenty twenty five. In the third quarter, can you speak to that with regards to? Phase one and phase two, the fact that phase two is not even going to start until much later?
Is the chart part of the Paul Sinelli memo, is that the one he's looking at?
And is that? It's on, it's on page twenty five.
Project milestone scheduled dated January twenty one.
Okay. So. Mister Davis, that was a part of the um. Memo that Paul Sinelli put together to this uh city council back in January of this year. At the time, our anticipation was, thank you, at the time, we had. Hoped that we could get started this year, earlier this year. As you can see, it anticipated starting in Q two of this year. So the direct. We we are where we are today. The durations in the schedule are correct. Meaning, once bonds are issued, you can hit the start button. Um and you'll see a thirty six month schedule for phase one completion. Go ahead, sorry. Were you going to say something?
Yeah, just clarify to me, uh basically, these are running concurrent, the phase one and two. At what point would phase two begin, do you know?
Well, what we had hoped at the beginning, at the beginning of this year in January, what we had hoped was to get started in Q two of this year. And we're hoping, we were hoping that we could pull together uh hotel financing um and office financing this year to start, you know, by the end of the year. Again, we're. If I, if I had a crystal ball, I could tell you, yeah, we we could start uh phase two. You know, so many months after we start phase one, but I would say, as I did last week, I think it's about. To be safe, we probably need about twenty four months between the start of phase one. And the start of phase two, just to pull together the the construction finance, the hotel hospitality market. Isn't a hundred percent back, you know, from pre pandemic. And lenders are still very tight on hotel construction financing. So I, again, I don't have a crystal ball to tell you exactly when phase two would start, but. You know, we're start, we're starting to come out of the woods on the hospitality sector.
I guess Mike, my request of you is if we can get an updated GAT chart, uh that's more. Realistic to what you're proposing.
Yeah, I, what I could do is. I could start with it just basically being upon bond issuance and then show you what the durations are from there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I just, if I could just clarify, I think what, you know, one of the important things is, and I think this is something that's hung up. Some of the things that the developer has said over the years and meetings. I think the thing to focus on is, you know, they pick a point in time at which they submitted this, and as as Matt has referenced, they had intended to get that started in the second quarter of this year. So I think that once you hit go and once you have bond that would be issued and proceeds available. You're looking at, I think, right now with our focus on phase one, you're looking at thirty six months to completion of that. And so putting, that I think it's it's more productive for us to probably think about that in terms of months of construction. Knowing that there's some flexibility in when bonds might be issued if the council decides to to move forward with this.
All right, thank you, we will, um, or sorry to Ken, did you have clarification?
No, I just have an additional.
Yeah, we're going to circle through, if you have another, if you have another separate question, yep, Trent.
Thank you, Mayor, uh this question is for Bruce, and I was hoping to. Get a little bit more detail, first of all, thanks for your presentation, and I always feel like I learned a new term that I can use with my CPA friend, to sound like I know what I'm talking about next time we are chatting.
Which was, which was today's?
Oh, uh capital packet or capital. Stack, I think, I should have admitted my ignorance on them, but anyway. My question was related to what sounded like a stringent uh process that you described on how the bond proceeds would actually be paid out. How does that differ compared to other projects you've seen and potentially the twenty seventeen agreement that was struck earlier with the city?
Yeah, great question, Trent. So the. The expected handling of the bond proceeds hasn't yet been fully fleshed out in the development agreement, and that will need to be. I know that um Pete Heaven and and Corb Maxwell, the developers attorneys have been talking about that, and. You'll see those details, I expect them to be fairly similar. A- as to, you know, release sequencing and and how they are on a prorata basis with the private funds. I I think they'll be fairly similar as to what you've seen in past deals. What I was really wanting to emphasize is that, you know, there's going to be really clear rules about this, not only on. The receipt of the revenues, as I mentioned before, but um. We're we're hoping and expecting that this phase one bond issue will. Generate roughly twenty two million dollars of of funding, that's, you know, from the developers' numbers, and. I think what DA David says, run so far is, it looks pretty realistic, even with interest rates increasing. But you know, that that is still to be determined, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, and. It it's really important to note that. The TIF bonds will only generate what the TIF bonds generate, you know, the city is not going to be. On the hook to make up the difference at all, so if the TIF funds generate, you know, twenty million or seventeen point five million. Will need to, or if that's what's projected, we on the city team will need to, you know. Talk with the development team about whether this is really ready to go, so it's not just you all. Approving the development agreement, it's, that really is just the start for a whole lot of work about sizing the bonds. Making sure that it's going to be viable before those bonds are even sold. And then making sure that the protocols that are laid out in the development agreement are followed as it relates to the dispersment of those bond proceeds, so. Quite a lot of details yet to come, even after your approvals, perhaps later this month.
Now, Bruce, a preliminary um assessment of the feasibility is part of your analysis, right? But then it goes through, in terms of whether you've looked at their budget, if the numbers make sense, but then there's another round with the bond check.
Yeah, I'm, Mayor, I'm glad you mentioned that, so Laura talked about the development of the feasibility study, which was done back in twenty nineteen. And that is what the bondholders will be hinging their decision on whether and. How to buy, invest in these bonds on, so. You know, it's one thing for us on the on the team to be looking at these numbers and say, yes, all these numbers hang together, but ultimately. The bond investors will need to have confidence in that feasibility study that is done by a third party, you know, completely removed from this project. And um. That's where, that's really the lunchpin as well, in terms of whether and how these bonds get sold.
Great, thank you, Bruce, I think Hillary had her hand up next.
Yeah, this question's for whoever once that I see you guys are tag teaming tonight, so this will be fun. So in addition to the bond proceeds, this might be for Laura, can you just explain a little bit more about the escrow fund that we're still negotiating on?
Yeah, so I think as I outlined in my memo, one of the things that um. Since the developer came back in January, February of this year. And we restarted these conversations in earnest. Matt touched on the addition of the affordability and the sustainability components, which they've gone back and incorporated in. One of the things that the council also uh was interested in was looking at some sort of performance escrow, so that if. The base, at this point, um focused really on phase one, because that's. Where the developer has secured their financing in looking at some sort of measure that would help. It'd be be available if the project did to the city, if the project did not move forward. As planned, and that's currently something that's still under negotiation with the developers' team. But we'll have that, you know, we'll have kind of final and bust um on that for you. Next week when we send out the next packet in that regard.
Okay, thank you, anyone who hasn't asked a question yet, have a question or comment, yes, Ben?
Uh yeah, I'd say this question's primarily for the developer. So we've said that we've lost some of the, some of the ground floor retail in the primarily residential buildings, um due to. That being unappetizing for um. You know, for for financing essentially, but I'm I'm struggling to understand how. Amenity space is is more appetizing for for financing, which I I don't see as generating a lot of potential revenue at all. And if that's the case, is there a future where that space is? You know, usable for retail or other kinds of mixed uses?
So. Again, the. I'll back up a little bit and then get your. The right answer um or the answer. The lenders really wanted to not just shrink this food hall, but shrink the overall leverage of retail within the project. So. Where the amenity space. where the amenity space was prior was up on the second or third, it was actually combined second and third floor over on the Roland side of the apartments.
Okay.
Okay, and so what we did was, we, you know, they said they also wanted to add additional multifamily, so in order to, you know, not scrap that plan and still have a nice, you know, usable storefront, you know, activated storefront there on Johnson Drive, what we decided to do is take all the leasing offices that were also over on the Roland side, they were down at the ground level, take those leasing offices and that amenity space, put them there on the Johnson Drive area, and then where the amenity space was, there's about a gain of six apartments there now.
Okay.
So that, you know, that's basically the, the swap that was done.
Yeah, so we're still looking at some kind of like street level activation there.
Oh, yeah, so on Johnson, on either side of the amenity space, you're gonna have, I think it's about fifteen hundred square feet on either side, on the end caps, probably a coffee shop on one side and some sort of service retail on the other, that's on the Johnson Drive side, and then on the Roland side, you still have a big restaurant space with all the outdoor seating, more small shop retail, then two more restaurant spaces with outdoor seating, and then another strip of the small shop retail leading up toward the hotel.
Okay, and so that sort of diagonal parking along Johnson Drive is still, is that still part of the, the plan there? Or is it?
We're in discussions with that, the diagonal parking on Johnson, yeah, right now, it's part of the plan, as it's kind of right now up and down Johnson Drive. I think there was a question about the, the four closest spaces to the entranceway off of Johnson, and whether or not there were good site distances for, for traffic there.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Leah.
I just have a concern about it being two phases, I mean, having all of that residential area and then doing more construction when people are living there, I would think, would think bothered the people living there, having construction go on so close to where they live? Is that a problem elsewhere that you've experienced, I mean?
My feeling is like, you know, if you live down the plaza and you were in a, you know, in an apartment building on the plaza, and they were putting up one next to you, probably have some, you know, daily noise, but the site, the phase one site will be, you know, operating independently from that construction, so you're not gonna have construction traffic really going in through the parking deck. The, the area where the office is will be, will be closed off for that construction, and the hotel really sits up on the hill by itself, so, you know, I think that as far as construction traffic goes, you know, it's gonna be sitting pretty independent from the, from the construction.
I'm just thinking more of the noise, I mean, are people gonna know when they rent a department in that place that in a short time, there's going to be construction going on right, right across the way?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, Mary?
Yeah, Matt, could you remind me, I wasn't here for the first iteration, is the office space remaining the same size as it was in the first iteration, or is it a little bit smaller given the new circumstances of our world?
Actually, in the original FTC, okay, and the original seventeen FDP, I think it was only fifty thousand square feet and seventy five, okay, seventy five, and then we grew it with an amendment to a hundred thousand square feet, which is what we still show, we're still showing a hundred thousand square feet here. Yep.
All right. Are you seeing no other new hands, we'll circle back to Ken.
My question has to do with the fact that we have redone Johnson Drive just recently with paving. Is there gonna be any kind of street bond that's gonna be issued in terms of making sure that the, the construction traffic doesn't damage the work that we've already invested in that, in that Johnson Drive corridor?
I don't know, Pete, do you want to speak to how that might be addressed in the development agreement?
I believe there was one in the, in the former redevelopment agreement.
With all the development projects that we've been bringing to you for approval, even stipulated warranty bonds will be issued, so there is damage to any public streets, they have to repair those, bringing them up to the same standards or better. So the answer is yes.
Thank you.
All right, Debbie, did you have a hand up or no?
I didn't, but I just wanna make a comment. I, I continue to have optimism that this is gonna be built, I, I don't know if I'm gonna be alive when it's done, and I, I, I show some concern not just about the what, because I've gone through five iterations of whats from an aquarium to apartments, and that's quite a disparity in terms of what quality we're getting, I think. But my concern now is how, it's not the what, it's the how with financing, because that seems to be the biggest problem we've had in this is the financing ability. And I'm really hopeful, and I hope someone can come back during the public hearing and express where we are with financing. Is it gonna happen, and what the current ratings of the financiers are, I don't know if our bond rating will change any, but you know, I'm interested in the developers' bond rating as well, but also what we're gonna get in terms of the other financing options and, and how that affects the entire project, so my concern is the what, but it is also very much about the how.
I would add maybe to, to Debbie's comment and a, a direct question on that, I know, I know Bruce said, you know, that he's seen certain construction budget contingencies, so maybe Matt and Bruce, you could tag team this one built into the budget, but you know, we continue to see escalating costs, escalating inflation, possibly increasing interest rates to control that inflation, and so I guess, you know, how, how competent are you on that start date in getting to the bond issuance, and what sort of cushion do you have built in, and you know, has already been discussed and agreed to by your lenders if costs do go up, say fifteen percent between now and when the bonds go out?
Yep. We have built in some contingencies to the cost escalations, we have also spoken, you know, started discussions with both O Z K and B G O about, you know, sizing up the loan amounts, because in addition to costs going up, rents have gone up too, so that will allow for hopefully some additional loan proceeds to kind of carry along with the cost increases. But we are in those discussions, and yeah, there will be a, you know, an ongoing discussion with the lenders on that.
What's the appetite so far in those discussions with the lenders?
They, they're open to doing another market study, which, which will give them the, you know, the new rent rates.
Okay, Bruce, anything to add from your analysis?
Mayor, I, I'm planning on talking, as I mentioned last week, with the developer and their financiers a, a little bit more between now and when we put out the next packet next week. But I also, I, I realized as I was talking before that I, I wanted to just elaborate a little bit more on how I see the chain of events going, so you have a certainly a series of big decisions to make next or two weeks from now, right, about extending and resetting TIF and CID and, and approving a development agreement. But from my perspective, that's really almost only the beginning of our process as it relates to the bond issue. You know, this bond will not be sold if the other pieces of the capital stack aren't in place, and if the development budget isn't at least substantially complete and, and verified, right, because why would we issue the bonds if we didn't know that it would slide into the capital stack? And also be enough along with all the other funding sources to do the phase one. And so that's gonna really take a lot of work with the, the developer and their private financing providers and their, their contractors to get all of that in place, we're, we're not gonna have all that in place by two weeks from now, but we will have to before, certainly I'm comfortable, but also Kevin is your bond attorney and Pete is your development attorney are comfortable saying, yep, we're, we're good to go with this financing. You know, it's really important to note that you don't bear financial risk with the financing. If, as you know, Mr. Cash just mentioned, what if there's written in shortfalls, you know, you bear no financial responsibility to make up for those shortfalls, and the bond investors are a hundred percent clear on that, the bond offering document will have that language probably about twenty times in it in terms of saying, this is not a general obligation of the city of mission, right? And so it's night and day from what you might issue for a street project or a facility here in the city in terms of that security pledge. But even so, we don't want to be even close to in, in, taking on any reputational risk or any just hassle, you know, even though there's no financial risk, there is hassle involved if you sell these bonds and then the deal doesn't happen from there, so we're all very motivated to make sure that doesn't happen, and part of that, Mayor, coming full circle with this run on sentence is making sure that we feel really solid about the construction budget and all the elements in that, and also about the other financing providers being in sync with us as to how this is all gonna come together. So I hope that's helpful, you know. I'm not saying this deal is good to go, I think we're very close to having something that's worth putting in front of you in terms of the TIF, the CID and the development agreement, but there's a lot of work to be done between now and you actually selling those bonds.
So Bruce, you're looking to have a meeting with the development team and also their lenders to sort of hear directly about their comfort level with those increasing costs or contingencies, or what cushions been built in at this stage?
Right, Mary, exactly, and, and I guess more broadly to just understand where the, they, they're thinking they're at in terms of the underwriting process. And ask a few probing questions around the edges of that, you know, the under, the bond, excuse me, not the bond, the banks are really on the same side as the city, right, their money is really at risk, yours is a general or special obligation with no, you know, recourse to the city, but if O Z K puts millions of dollars into this project and it goes belly up, well, they're losing a lot of money, so the due diligence they're doing, the underwriting is all really even above what we're trying to do as your advisors, so I, I would really like to just better understand where they're at, so I can report to you on the twenty eighth and again, foreshadow what's to come.
Yeah, and, and I think you've been with us long enough to know that that piece is going to be really important, you know, I know we can't control for all uncertainty, but I think it's fair to say that us as well as the broader city community are concerned about another false start, so to speak, and, you know, executing these agreements potentially, but then, you know, having things fall apart before a bond offering stage, and so, yeah, the more we can do to shore that up, I think will, will help bring confidence.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, then, then Hillary?
Yeah, Matt, this question is for you, and a, a good term from Solly, I just wanted to reemphasize, I think a lot of our constituents are really worried about a false start and you know, what, the damage sort of to the city in terms of just lost opportunity and time and, and land use, you know, if, if the, if the project doesn't actually get to completion, so that, that is a big worry that's on all of our minds, and I just want to reiterate, reiterate that. But my, my question is actually about the affordability and sustainability pieces, I, I see good changes and still some open questions on both of those compared to previous plans. In this January pulse, pulse and Ellie letter, you know, we have about twenty percent of units that were some kind of affordable units, and you know, now it's, it's ten percent of the project, more units, more affordable, so, you know, I'm seeing that as kind of a mixed bag, but would, would you say that the the ten percent of the, of the units in the current proposal at sixty percent AMI is you know, more, I guess what I'm asking is, do you think it's more of a benefit to the, the potential future residents than the previous proposal where it was twenty percent at the, you know, the higher levels, a hundred percent AMI, then ninety percent, then eighty percent? You know, I, it, it's, the point is, it's a little disappointing to see the percentage of affordable units go down by half. But, but I see that the two sides to the coin, so I'm, I'm just wondering what your thoughts are in that in terms of the benefit to the potential residents?
I think we were trying to strike a balance, a couple of different balances.
Yeah.
One, meet your goal of having affordability. And two, keeping a revenue stream that the lenders were still comfortable with. And that's kind of, you know, we, we spent a lot of time working with Bruce actually on a bunch of different combinations, and that seemed to be the one that kind of hit the sweet spot for everybody.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, please.
You know, I think it's important to note that you'll obviously have to make your own decisions about the, the merits of that compromise, but the ten percent at sixty percent is costing, costing the development significantly more than the twenty percent at eighty and a hundred.
Yeah, yeah, I ran the math a little bit, and I see that, it's, it's still, you know, there's still two sides to that.
Of, of course, I would say that, you know, I, I'm not an affordable housing expert by any means, but my understanding and working with other developers in other parts of the country is that and, and also housing advocates in different parts of the country is that getting units that are more deeply affordable is more meaningful than having more that are more marginally below the market.
Yeah.
And, and so I'm sure you can see different perspectives on that too, but going with what I've heard from those housing advocates as well as the fact that it was gonna be significantly lower rents for those sixty percent of AMI units, it was my advice to the, the city to go with that, as opposed to ones that were, you know, not a whole lot lower than what the market rents were gonna be.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that perspective, that, that does make sense. Yeah, and, and as to the sustainability, I think the only piece you didn't mention for certification was synergy, is that largely just because it's mostly constructed?
It's mostly constructed, and it, while it has a lot of energy efficiency stuff, it's not gonna meet a lot of, because it's a big entertainment center, it's not gonna meet a lot of the qualifications that are necessary for a Green Globes project.
Okay.
It'd be hard to get something like that, a, a component like that, a concept like that to meet, you know, Green Globes.
Okay, I see, yeah, that, that is an improvement, I certainly appreciate seeing that improvement from the previous plans.
Yeah, back to Hillary. I know we've talked a little bit about phase two, this is for you, Matt, but what's the plan for phase two, I mean, I know we don't have one right now, but what are you guys throwing around in terms of?
Franchise agreement signed with Marriott for a two hundred and two room element hotel.
But more in relation to financing?
Again, I, I can't, I can't tell you that I'm gonna have financing for it, you know, three months after we start phase one. We're gonna get it as quickly as we can, as I said, the hospitality sector is coming back, but it's not a hundred percent back. You're seeing loans done on some smaller hotels, you're seeing loans done on remodels, stuff like that, but there's not a ton of new construction hotel right now.
Thank you. Yes, Kristen, and then Trent.
I just want to make sure I understand this, so by the time we have to vote on, uh, two weeks from today, financing will not be one hundred percent in place, is that correct?
We just have term sheets from both lenders. You, you won't have commitment letters done until we get further down the process.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Bruce, could you maybe speak to if that's typical or not, or sort of what that usually looks like?
Yes, thanks, Mayor and consumers. For a, a large multipurpose project like this, this isn't uncommon. I think also the fact that, you know, the developer is, is looking to make this work, putting in more equity with the plan to I guess what I'm trying to say is, you know, I think we all know that this project has spent money, it's putting in more money. But that just makes it a little more complex getting all the financial pieces together, this isn't concerning to me, like I said, I want to talk to the banks that understand where they're at. Consumer Parker Thomas, I would say that I think I also want to ask him, are they thinking about phase two as, as well, and, and how does that factor into their, their decision making, because I'm I have to believe that even if, you know, Matt is conservatively saying he can't conservatively saying he can't commit anything on that, I'd like to know what the banks are thinking about phase two and how this, you know, how that impacts their methodology and decision-making. It's, I can understand your concern about or potential concern about not having all those financing and things in place because you've been down this road before, right? Absolutely. And Mayor, you mentioned, you know, wanting to have some better assurances that even before you approve the TIF, the CID and the development agreement that this is, is heading in the right direction. I think we're all aligned on the city team to do as much in the next two weeks to, to give you a really good update on that. But it, I think it makes sense to consider these elements so that we can actually get to the next really big step, which is pulling all the financing pieces together. And if they're not together, we're not selling bonds. I'll just, you know, keep saying that because the reputational risk is really selling those bonds and then have the project not happen. And that mess, that would be really not a financial risk to the city, but I would not want you to have to deal with that. So I guess I'll leave it at that, but it's a huge, huge area focus for me going forward.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, so Matt, right. And so, you know, in order to sell those bonds, we would need bank financing commitments, both from the primary lender and the mez lender, mezzanine lenders, not just letters of interest, but actual commitments with all those details spelled out saying, we're ready to go. And we would want to make sure that the bond scenarios at that point in time are as accurate and realistic as possible so that when we price the bonds or when the underwriter prices the bonds, we know that this is the last piece that needs to come in and that everything is going to work. And as Matt just mentioned, that all these pieces are going to close at the same time, right? So that, you know, that's another area of protection for the city in that you won't be putting out money or hanging out there before having really a strong level of confidence that all the other pieces are there.
Yeah, Trent, then Ken.
Thank you. This question is for Mr. Valenti. Regarding the green space that you had mentioned against the, I think it was one of the corners. Could you describe a little more about what your ideas for that space and if there's going to be any public access to that part as well?
Yeah.
Are you talking about by the new apartment building?
Yeah. The, they're in the top right, yeah, exactly.
So those, those are actually private for the apartment brokers. So those are public spaces. Public spaces would be all of the Oh, I'm sorry. That's okay. And then all of this will be, again, all public space, the performance stages right here. All of this is outdoor seating for the restaurants. The two restaurant locations are here and here. There's a large covered outdoor space here on the first level, which is outdoor seating for the restaurant at that location. And then this is the, this area would be private amenity space for the residents as well as this space. This space may open up to the back of the food hall. So you could actually probably will probably actually have this open to public, some of that.
So it sounds like those two green areas, one of them might be overflow food areas and then the other one's more of like a park or?
This one will be, you know, it'll have bocce and, you know, it's outdoor stuff for the residents there, that sort of stuff. Okay. Thank you. Yep.
All right. I think, Ken, you had a question, then Debbie.
Yeah, I'm still having difficulty with this since it's tentative that we're not going to get a performance escrow agreement. That to me is something that was high on our list of things that we wanted to have in place. And I don't understand why we can't come to terms on that.
We're working on it. We, I hope to have us on the, on the same page and something to present to you all, you know, by the end of next week. It's we're having to put in a significant amount of money into the capitals, into the new capital stack as new equity. It's very tight. Just coming up with, you know, 10 to 15 million dollars is, you know, it's not something you can just snap your fingers at and have 10 to 15 million dollars ready to put into the project. Every penny is, is tough to come by right now.
Matt, do you know what GFI's revenues were last year?
Do I know what their revenues? I do not.
Okay. Yeah, Debbie, then Ben.
I just had a question, Matt, on the medical office. I hadn't seen as much on that before. Do you envision that being like small doctor offices or are you envisioning a mini hospital with people staying overnight?
No, I, no, not a mini hospital. I think office, I think we were trying to play off of the hospital, thinking that we could draw docs to have, you know, independent doc offices that would be playing off of the hospital and the stuff right down the street.
Sure. Well, if you had apartments and a hotel.
Right.
I mean, that would be great to have a doctor's office on board. Thank you.
Yeah, Ben, then Hillary.
Yes, question is for Bruce. Bruce, last week, you presented to us and said that, if I recall correctly, the the total amount of financing that would be derived from tax incentives as we're looking at it right now is relatively small for a project of this type, not dramatically so, but relatively. I feel like out of sort of due diligence, I need to ask, is is that a risk? Does that risk the success of the project sort of unnecessarily?
Councilmember, can I ask you what you mean sort of unnecessarily or?
I mean, did we arrive at those numbers? Sort of, is that just what's needed to make the project happen? Or is there some? You know, why are we looking at a proposal that spends relatively little on tax incentives as a proportion of the whole project? And does that expose us to risk of the project not getting done?
That's a really interesting question. I could argue both sides of that. The developers are coming to the city saying we want to essentially have the same terms incentive terms as what was agreed to, you know, five years ago, four years ago. And they are saying they can make that work with the exception of increasing the CID, you know, from 1% to 2%. I would absolutely say that their prospective rate of return is on the low side of what you would expect in most situations. I guess in fury, you could say, boy, does that put the project at increased strain. But this is not a project in a vacuum, right? These are developers that have said, you know, we're not looking to throw the towel and we know what this rate of return is, but we are still wanting to move forward with it and to make our money back over time. So, and I've seen deals like this before. This is, this is on the low end of the rate of return. But it's not, I've seen lower actually and developers enter projects for all sorts of reasons, including to recoup past expenses, even knowing that the rate of return will be less. So I guess in, overall, I wouldn't say that it puts undue strain on the project. I think it is viable if all the pieces come together and that's still an if. But I would, but, you know, it, it, it's, it is a project that doesn't have a lot of cushion in it. Because I think they have estimated conservatively on the construction budget. I think they've estimated reasonably on interest rates. And so, you know, if I saw them really making unrealistically optimistic assumptions on their budget, on their financing, on their performance, I would be the first one to say timeout, this is, you know, this is La La Land, this is not realistic. But I think you look at all those elements and I don't think they're being unrealistically optimistic on their.
Okay, yeah. So yeah, it's been a long road to get here. I would hate to see us sort of trip over being, I guess, being stingy, you know, at this stage, but it sounds like that's the amount they've asked for. You think it's feasible? It looks good on paper. There's no concern.
No.
It's not, it's not a viable project.
Right. And I think, you know, the city has been through a lot on this project. I give you credit for, you know, considering this, this current iteration. And I think it's absolutely fair for the city to be getting the same type of revenues along the way during the TIF term as what was negotiated previously. So if I thought this needed a lot more incentive or I thought it was just way too skinny, I would be the first one to say so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Bruce, just to make sure I'm reading your financial lingo right. When you say that they've been conservative on their construction estimates, does that mean they've estimated high and so that it's a safer construction estimate?
They have not estimated low.
Okay, they have not estimated low. Got it.
Yeah. And believe me, sometimes we see developers that oftentimes developers estimate super conservative, i.e. high to make their need for assistance look better. That's not the case here. And sometimes we see developers that really lowball to make this look viable. And I don't feel like that's the case here either.
Great, thank you. Yeah, Hillary.
I don't know who this is for, maybe Matt, maybe Brian. And I think this will probably be tackled in the Plating Commission meeting when you guys look at the preliminary development plan, but and I know that we looked at this back in January or February, but I'm wondering why the parking spots are still at 1,457, even though the apartments have doubled.
So we did reduce, we had a 45,000 square foot food hall. It's down to 10, 10, 15,000 square feet. We've also subtracted some additional retail on the Johnson Drive. So the way the numbers work, we did have a surplus previously of parking. So the way that the, the numbers work right now for the zoning, for the MXD, it, it still has a a small surplus.
And that surplus includes if phase two of the project was complete, right? That's intended to serve both phase one and phase two.
And I think what you see with your MXD zoning is your, as opposed to, you know, one single hotel or one single office project, you, you might have a requirement for so much parking there and that's it. And here you've got different uses that have different points during the day where they're very busy. And then all of a sudden, there's no one there at night. Well, that same parking can be used for another use, you know, at night. So you're not in, the purpose of your MXD zoning is to utilize the same spot more than once a day. Basically, the idea where, you know, if you were, I should say for more than one use per day.
Okay, thank you. Solly, if, or Mayor, if I may, could, could we ask Brian maybe to share a little bit more about the the changes and or the non-changes, you know, from 17 to now in relation to parking and what other anticipations you're expecting or that you're working through in the Community Development Department prior to the Planning Commission? If any.
Well, Matt already outlined the changes between the 2017 plan and the plan that's being proposed now. It's essentially replacement of the food hall with the apartment building. And then some of the ground floor retail in that one apartment building on Johnson Drive. I frankly had the same question about parking when I first saw it too. It seems like we're adding quite a bit in terms of use, yet we're keeping the same number of parking spaces from the 2017 plan. So we've been working through those numbers. It's unfortunately not an apples to apples when we're looking at mixed use, the types of uses that are in there. So we're working through that right now. Carrie and I have been scrubbing the numbers and trying to figure out how all that fits together. I think Matt's correct in that you have different types of uses going on, different types of days. So you have an office building that's going to be occupying some of the parking garage during the day. Those folks go home in the evening by the time the apartment dwellers come home. So you're kind of reusing that same space over as opposed to a lot of development projects where you might see a parking lot that's filled during the day, but the evening's empty. This will be a parking lot, parking spaces that are pretty much occupied all the time, 24 hours with one use or another. So there's no clean cut defined definition for this one.
Thank you, Hillary. See any more questions from the council? I did just want to echo a comment that was made by Councilmember Davis and about the performance escrow and your response, Matt, that you hope to have something by the end of next week. I really hope that it's been conveyed how important that piece is and that we can do better on the negotiations than in of next week and getting that part resolved. Yes, Hillary?
Sorry, I just had a quick comment and follow up. I would just really love to see us be able to get a package to council and more importantly, to the public by the end of next week so that I just realistically, I don't know how we as a council can absorb anything before the, you know, really after next Friday and feel fully prepared to take action. And so I, again, just pressing that point and that I hope we're able to get something as complete as possible. I know we'll still have the PDP out there with the Planning Commission and I'll look forward to, I know Brian will give us a really solid rundown and of what happened there. And maybe some of us are even interested in watching, but we're attending. But anyways, that's all. Thanks.
Sorry, microphone. There we go. Thank you to everyone for your comments and presentations this evening. As a reminder, the council is not taking binding action tonight. Our next meeting on the items discussed will be during our special city council meeting scheduled for 6:30 PM on Wednesday, September 28th, here at the Powell Community Center. This meeting has been recorded and will be posted on the city's website at missionks.org. Please contact the administration offices at 913-676-8350 with any questions or concerns. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.